All right, it is 7:00 PM and I would like to call to order the regular city council virtual meeting for Monday, October 26, 2020.
This meeting is being recorded.
If we could all say the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Roland. Bizzard.
Here.
Bellinger.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Rhines.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Roland.
He's there.
Sorry.
Roland, Roland.
I'm in, I'm here.
Great, thank you Barb. And now I'm looking for approval of the agenda for this evening, please.
So move Weiss.
Thank you.
Support Bellinger.
Thank you. Barb, will you call the, uh, roll for the roll, for the agenda, please?
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Holly, do we have anybody join us for audience participation?
No, we do not.
All right, thank you. This would be the time for audience participation, but we'll move right along. I'm looking for approval for council meeting minutes of September 28th, 2020. Uh, if nobody has any, uh, changes, uh, that need to be made.
Motion from Bellinger to approve as submitted.
Thank you.
Second Rhines.
Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll for the approval of the council meeting minutes?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
All right, thank you Barb. Noah, did you have an opportunity to review accounts payable?
Yes, I did, Mayor. And I'm gonna make two separate motions because there's two separate groups. So I'd like to make the first motion to approve checks 73636 dated 9/22 through check 73679 dated 10/2 and ACH, um, 32 through 35 for a total of $2,206,839.11. And then I'll open the floor if anybody had any particular questions for Corey.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I'll second Noah's motion.
All right, thank you very much. Barb, will you call the roll for the first set of accounts payable, please?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Dan.
I'm sorry. Roland.
Abstain, thank you.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Is there a reason for abstention stated? Oh.
Uh, we, we just, I think we just lost Jeff. He's not on my screen anymore. Uh, Holly, if he comes back on, or Tim, would we need to have a reason stated?
Maybe he went to the breakout room. I've got an invitation to go to the breakout room right now. Uh, also, he does have to give a reason for the extension.
Okay. What, if he comes back in, um, Barb, we'll resume, oh, here he is, okay. Jeff, can you hear me, Jeff Roland?
Yeah, sorry, I got a notification to go to the breakout room and.
That, that's, that's okay. We're gonna go, uh, back to the accounts payable. In order to abstain, uh, we would need a reason for your abstention according to our clerk, Hallie Thompson.
Oh, right on. I, I did not have an opportunity to review ahead of this meeting, so.
Okay.
I was not comfortable in doing a vote one way or the other.
Holly, advice?
That's not a valid, you have to have some sort of, um.
An abstention?
Personal gain from abs, abs, of the, from the counts payable.
So in this, uh, type of situation, then would he just vote no for abstaining?
Or dip pass, I mean, I'm confused.
You, you have to vote yes or no, you can't just abstain unless you have some sort of conflict.
Uh, Tim, is that accurate?
It, it is, um, generally, the grounds for abstention is that you have some personal conflict of interest or are personally involved in some matter that's before the city council. If you're, if you haven't had an opportunity to review these, then perhaps either, you, you should vote no if you really don't feel comfortable voting yes, but you could vote yes as well.
Fair enough, I appreciate that, yeah. I, I thought that was within my right to, uh, abstain in that moment, um, without having to declare some sort of, uh, personal reason, so, uh, yeah, in, in that event, um, you know, I'll, I'll vote no.
Thank you. Barb, does that put us back on track or do we need to finish out the votes or the roll call?
No, I, I have everyone else.
Okay.
No, moving on to the next set?
With that, with that being said, the next group, I had a chance to review, and I'd like to make a motion for checks 73680 dated 10/2 to check 73723 dated 10, I think I wrote 16, um, and ACH 36 through 41 for a total of $322,173.33.
Thank you, Noah.
And then the floor's open if anybody has any questions or references for Corey.
I, I do have a comment.
Yeah.
Yes.
Bellinger. Um, the title at the top says 73680.
Yep, let me just double check, cause I hand, I hand wrote it, so let me just flip to that page, see if I wrote it correctly. Sorry. It should be 73680 to 73723 and ACH the six, uh, 36 to 41, is that what I said?
That's what you said, but if you look right, that's in the title, but underneath it, the first check is.
Check was 76, or 73663.
Yes.
Okay.
Those were included in the first.
First one, yep.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, there was a little overlap there, so. So I wanna, I wanna go with my original motion.
All right, thank you Noah. Would anybody like to offer, uh, support for Noah's motion?
Second Rhines.
Thank you. Uh, if there are no questions for the accounts payable, um, for this motion, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
No.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Okay, uh, at this time, um, uh, which is, uh, listed on your agenda, um, I'm going to make them, um, request a motion to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege letter dated October 22nd, 2020 from Cole Stoker Tasky PC as permitted by MCL 15.268H.
So move Weiss with the same verbiage.
Thank you.
Second Rhines.
All right, thank you. Uh, Barb? Barb, would you call the roll for going into closed session, please?
I was on mute. Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right, you should all have an invitation to join the breakout room and just remember that you're going to want to resume and not actually close out your, your Zoom, um, when we leave, uh, the closed session and come back into open session.
The recording has stopped.
We are back in, uh, our open session now and we're going to go ahead and proceed to our action items for this evening. Uh, we do have one action item and that would be our freedom of information request appeal. And I'm, uh, looking for a motion, uh, regarding this action item.
I'll, uh, make a motion that we uphold the FOIA denial and authorize the Meredith issue a written response to the appeal.
Thank you.
Second, Smith.
Thank you, Councilman Weiss, thank you, Councilman Smith. Is there any discussion? Uh, with no, uh, discussion, Holly, did we have anybody join us?
We did not.
All right. Uh, Barb, would you call the roll for the, for the motion, please?
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes our action items for the evening. Uh, we'll move right along, uh, through our packet. In our packet, under discussion items, we do have a memo from Corey regarding the broadband internet update, so I'll turn that over to Corey. And if anybody has any questions for him, uh, thorough memo as always, Corey, um, so I'll go ahead and, uh, let you take it from here.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So in the packet, as the mayor referenced, you have a memo, just a brief, two pager, I think, uh, that goes over an update on this question of how to improve broadband service in town. Um, this was a council directive, uh, probably the end of August, just before school started, um, when there was some community outreach regarding, uh, poor internet service in town. And so, we spent a little bit of time researching different options, um, really of which there are about four, and the memo summarizes those options. What I'm really looking for tonight is, on the second page of that memo, there's a series of next steps that are listed. And that was developed, uh, in consultation with a company or a nonprofit called Connected Michigan. Um, they have been probably the most helpful entity that we've spoken with in the last month and a half about this topic. And they, they were really, uh, keen on trying to pursue better service with existing providers and specifically, they, they highlighted Frontier. Uh, we know that probably majority or at least the plurality of our residents are on WOW. Uh, Frontier is, is the old phone, you know, system DSL type connections, uh, but Connected Michigan had said that they have been investing in fiber in town and they, they really wanted us to pursue with Frontier what their plans are for continual fiber extensions. And so, uh, through Connected Michigan, we have a conference call set up for later this week to, uh, begin that discussion with Frontier. But the second piece of it is, um, this topic called fixed wireless. So this is actually like a central location of a wireless provider, uh, which provides another option for, uh, individuals and businesses to sign up for that doesn't require the investment upfront, uh, to run wires through the city. And so, Connected Michigan again had said that there are two providers, and one in specific, I believe it's called Surf Air Wireless, that has, um, service within the greater Williamson area, mostly in, in the township, uh, outside of Williamson. And they said it would be wise to have a discussion with them as well as that other company, uh, that's more northeast of here, uh, to see if they've ever considered an opportunity in town. Um, the, the piece of that, that, you know, we might have some control on is they need a central location, uh, in order to locate. And so, within our industrial park, we have a existing communications tower, uh, which has some association with Verizon Wireless, and we also have a water tower. Uh, we've not, to my knowledge lately, um, leased water tower space to any companies. Uh, have worked in communities in the past that have done that, and it has some benefits. Uh, usually there's a lease or rental payment that comes in monthly. Um, I've seen those anywhere from $800 to $1,200 a month. Um, but there's also downsides in that they've, they have to usually locate things on the side of the tower and then they've gotta run all their equipment up in the middle of the tower. Um, and so it, you know, you don't, you no longer have complete control. Um, either way, we are not recommending at this time that we pursue some sort of municipal service. Uh, there are some communities that have gone down that path, and I, I pointed a couple of examples in the memo, um, but we're, I just don't think that's something we're interested in pursuing, you know, before we really fully realize whether there's something that a private service provider can do, whether fixed or wireless. And so, while I don't have the answers yet, um, this has started to come together and I think we have a, a bit of momentum to start to know who the players are, know who the contacts are, uh, to pull that information together. And so, what I was really looking for tonight is to offer an update, but then have an opportunity beyond that initial discussion we had, post a, uh, public comment, uh, to be sure that this is a path council, you know, has some sort of consensus on pursuing. Um, you know, at this point, I really just see it as, as conversations initially, and then once we talk to these experts and find out what they might recommend, uh, that would win, that would be when a, more of a strategy would come together.
Corey, I think this is fantastic and I think you've made more forward movement on this than what we have in the past years when this was brought up. So I'm, I think you're doing the, I think you guys are doing the right job and I, I'd like to see you take those next steps that you got outlined, especially, you know, if Frontier is willing to, you know, put some, invest a little bit out here. I mean, they already have a presence, so I'm, I'm happy with this. And especially in such a short amount of time from when we first started talking about it over the summer when we had, you know, community concerns because of our current, you know, situation with COVID and a lot of people working remotely and with kids, you know, going to school remotely. Does anybody have any questions for Corey?
No, I'd just like to say reliability and, uh, cost is gonna be a big thing, um, for a lot of the residents, so, you know, I just, this is, this is the best step I think I've seen taken on this, so, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Dan?
I had a, I had an amazing WOW experience this month, um, when my, my bill came and it was $4 more than it normally was, and I called them and I'm like, why is my bill more, nothing's changed? Um, and they said, well, congratulations, we've upgraded our modem offerings. And I'm like, well, I don't understand how that impacts my bill, and she's like, well, you're able, you're able to upgrade to the new modem for free. I said, outstanding, you can just send it to me? And she said, yep, we just need you to re-sign up for another two-year contract. No, I'll keep, I'll keep my modem. But then I noticed, I, okay, I'm paying for 100 megabytes per second, so I did a little test to see what I'm running at. And multiple tests across multiple days of solid three megabytes per second and a couple days, seven. So that's, that's what we're trying to get our citizens away from.
Yeah.
And I, so this is, this is a righteous mission at this point.
I think, uh, having a, having a phone call scheduled with Frontier for next week is great, you know, um, I, I had heard, hearing that Frontier has invested at least a small amount in fiber already in town was, uh, was a revelation to me. I'd heard a little, I'd heard rumors of it, but I didn't, I hadn't heard that, uh, I'd heard maybe they were, it was coming or, or something like that, but the idea that even if at a very limited amount, they've already have something of a presence is great. And if, if we could convince Frontier to increase their presence and start investing more in infrastructure, I think that would then put pressure on WOW to, to up their game and then people would have two viable choices in town. And that, uh, that I think is, isn't it achievable goal? I think you're, I think you're doing great, Corey, and let's, let's keep going, keep going this way.
Jeff, I saw you take yourself off mute.
Yeah, uh, I echo what Gene says. Uh, this is great, Corey, keep up the good work. I think this is a project that we have to go full steam ahead. Uh, like Gene, I've been checking the speed, cause, uh, Cooper's home doing his, uh, school work from home and, uh, Lori's working from home, so, uh, the download speeds, when I wear from five to 10, where we pay for 100. So if you call WOW, they'll give you a discount every time you call, I found out, so.
They also magically fix it for you in that moment, get you.
And they have you, they have you do a speed test on WOW Way Speed and it's always over 100.
Oh, it's always perfect. It's always perfect, well.
Anyway.
I think, I think we're definitely on the right track.
Yeah, I, I do too. And then just for your information, Corey, on my way home this evening, right across from the entrance to the industrial park near the doctor's office there, there was a Frontier truck parked with a van and they were hooked up to the telephone systems and the wiring right there, so, I don't know how long they'd been there, but it looks like they've got opportunities.
Good, excellent. So I think, I think the consensus is, Corey, keep moving forward and, and, and keep us, you know, informed and, and share new information when you have it.
I will, and I'll just say one other thing, uh, um, I'll, I'll learn later this week exactly the extent to Frontier's fiber. The folks at Connected Michigan, they have access to these maps, and he said he was seeing that there was fiber in town, but it, he said, you're gonna wanna confirm that with Frontier. So that's partly why we got connected. The other thing I'll say is, we got connected through, to Connected Michigan, um, I had asked LEAP if they had ever done any economic development deals based on internet, and they got us to them, and we learned that the Michigan Economic Development Corporation is apparently either funding or providing some sort of money to Connected Michigan to provide technical assistance. So, you know, I don't think we're gonna get a lot out of this, but they've already given me, you know, three, three phone numbers to call, um, and they've given me, uh, sample RFPs for the fixed wireless provider, so, to the extent that the state is investing in that, we're gonna try to, you know, bring some of that here.
Great, thank you, Corey. Any other questions for Corey regarding that? All right, we'll go ahead and keep moving through the agenda. Uh, we did not receive any correspondence, so I'll move ahead to department head reports. Uh, Corey, you gave us a, a memo, um, did you wanna expand upon any of that?
Uh, nothing further.
Okay, did anybody have any questions for Corey regarding his city manager report? All right, uh, moving on, uh, we have Chief.
I'm back. Um, so I don't have anything new to report, just thank you, I do appreciate the, the council's support, so, thanks.
Thank you, Chief. All right, um, we have Holly here. Holly, uh, go ahead and update us on what's happening next week.
So make sure you go out and vote next Tuesday, uh, we're, our polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Um, we're expecting a pretty busy day. Um, however, we've had well over half of our voters vote absentee, um, and we're getting really good returns on that too, so we're really excited, um, to have some, so much, um, participation this year. So, yeah, I'm sure I'll see all of you.
You, you will. Now, Holly, um, Holly, you, you'll have staff at our polling location, which is the middle school gymnasium, but will you also have to have staff at City Hall that day?
Yes.
Okay.
Barb and I are usually at City Hall back and forth between the precinct and City Hall. Um, it has to be staffed all day by the clerk's office, uh, because people can register and vote same day now.
Right.
Uh, we also have an absentee counting board that works at City Hall in the council chambers, so those will be full that day. Uh, we have seven inspectors working there and eight in the precinct.
All right, so you, your staff is ready and, uh, you guys always do a fantastic job. I, I expect nothing less, um, so I'm just gonna give you my well wishes right now. Thank you for you and Barb and, and all, all those involved.
I'm busy.
All right, and I, I don't see Rachel on here, but we did have, uh, treasurer listed. Is there anything that you wanted to share, Corey, on, on Rachel's behalf?
Uh, not, not at this time.
Okay. And we did receive, um, a printout from AGS regarding, uh, some work that is still funneling through, uh, them for permits. Um, Corey, can you give us a real quick update with Livingston County and how that's going?
Sure, yeah. And so the report from AGS was their September report, as a reminder, um, we officially went to Livingston County October 1st. There's a chance we might have one from October, um, if there was, uh, trade permits that came in, where there was a building permit already issued. So AGS still has a presence in town for those things that are, that are outstanding, that they already, um, had permits for. Um, the transition with Livingston County so far has been, I think, quite smooth. Um, we got a, a nice, just a email update from the building official over there about midway through, and he said they'd had six inspections in town and a, a handful of other trade permits. And, and most importantly, they said they knew every single contractor, uh, that they had received a permit from so far, so there was some familiarity there. Um, I think one of our biggest concerns was gonna be the fact that, um, you, you can't make a payment directly here, and that has not caused any issues thus far. Uh, that said, we have not had much in the way of an actual building permit, it's all been trade permits so far. Um, so, you know, we'll see when that, when that comes, but typically in the winter months, you know, you're not seeing a lot of, uh, you know, houses and garages and things like that, so. So far, so good, uh, I, I feel like I need to knock on wood now, but, uh, we, we've been happy so far.
All right, great, thank you so much. Um, moving along, uh, committee, subcommittee reports, does anybody have anything they'd like to share from, uh, their, uh, meetings? Dan, I saw your hand up.
I sat in for John at Parks and Rec last week, they had some exciting stuff going on, they got, uh, um, Williamson Area Beautification Fund donated a permanent outdoor speaker system for the band shell, and we accepted that donation Wednesday night, and that was able to be installed. So now the, uh, the Summer Concert Series will have a, have it to, have a sound system there for that, and, you know, National Night Out, if you wanna make announcements or whatnot. It, the, the band shell, I guess, had always been wired for one, but it had just never come about, and they were able to get it all to come together and, and install it, so they were very excited about that. And then, uh, the Williamson Stings were, had a, the old baseball scoreboard from the Williamson High School donated to them, and they were looking for permission to install that at the city fields. Um, and they, they basically were looking to see if we were, they didn't know exactly how they were going to do it, or how, exactly how it was going to look, but they wanted to make sure that it was something we were open to before they took, uh, that they took possession of it, didn't wanna get stuck with it, and we told, we thought that was, uh, that was a cool thing. So it sounds like what the, uh, the baseball fields out by, uh, Memorial Park, Scout Island, whatnot, out there are going to have, uh, have a scoreboard again soon. That was.
Nice. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Gene?
Yeah, the planning commission, um, we had a work session, um, on October 6th and, and started going over some, um, zoning, uh, stuff that the staff had prepared. Um, it's a lot, I mean, there's a lot that we're gonna be sinking our teeth into, obviously, um, we have such amazing staff, uh, here. Corey, Mike, yeah, I'm going back through this, I mean, you guys are just amazing, so anyway, um, lots of cool stuff going on in the, the planning commission that obviously would be become, coming before the, uh, council at some point.
Excellent. Anyone else? All right, uh, this is a time for audience participation again. Holly, did we have anybody join us?
No, we did not.
Okay, moving right along then, um, we've got council member comments, uh, let's see, Noah?
No, we did not. Okay, moving right along then. Um, we've got council member comments. Uh, let's see, Noah?
Uh, no comments for me. I'm good today.
All right, Dan?
No comments, thank you.
All right, Jeff Weiss?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Gene?
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Jeff Roland?
None, thank you.
John Bizzard?
I'm good.
All right, I don't have any comments either, so I'm going to ask for a motion for us to go into closed session again for a strategy discussion regarding collective bargaining as permitted by MCL fifteen point two six eight C.
So move.
Move.
All right, we had, all right, we had Reins and Weiss. Uh, if there's no discussion for that, Barb, will you call the roll so we can go into closed session?
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna have a breakout room, I believe, come up again. Um, is that correct, Holly? Yes, join the breakout room. All right, thank you.
I don't.
I don't see it yet.
I don't see it either.
You should still have the same breakout room as you did before.
Okay, hang on.
Okay.
Gaps down on the bottom screen, yeah.
This meeting is being recorded.
All right, we are back in open session and uh we have uh no action to take place from our closed session. So I'm looking for a motion to uh adjourn our meeting for this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, uh, Barb, will you call the roll so we can adjourn this evening's meeting?
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. All right, looks like we're adjourning this evening at eight twenty. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Goodbye, guys.